Thank you. Let's call the meeting to order for December 19, 2022, for the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners. Let's please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, citizen input. Do we have any in the room? If you wanted to make comments for something that's not on our agenda, you can fill out a blue form and have three minutes. And I don't see anyone in the room that wants to do that today. Stephanie, is anyone on Zoom? Okay, all right, thank you. No other public comments then? We will be having a meeting also Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m. What about the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, let's go to action item number three from the Bend Chamber of Commerce on your workforce housing initiative. Thank you so much for joining us if you want.
Hello, Chair Adair, hello Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us here today. Katie Brooks, CEO of the Bend Chamber of Commerce, just for the record. Good to see everybody, happy holidays. We are before you today to present a bit of research that we conducted last fall with Echo Northwest, and John Toponga is with us online today. But before we get into the nitty gritty of what we found in the survey, I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're doing overall and what we tried to accomplish with the survey itself. So the chamber for the last year and a half or so has taken on a workforce housing initiative. And, oh, and I also want to introduce Sarah Odendall, who's next to me, sorry. Sarah Odendall is Government Relations for the Bend Chamber, sorry Sarah. And Sarah's been a big part of the team working on putting several pieces of this together. And one piece is, we were before you a little over a year ago, we presented the results of a public poll that we took on how big is public perception of the lack of workforce housing? And what were their perceptions of what we could do about it? And we spoke about density and some other things with you last year. Since then, we started a social media program that really was geared on educating folks on who it is we were talking about. We are mostly targeting AMI 80 to 120, which is workforce housing as a broad term. It's not a capital A federally subsidized affordable housing, although we support that very much so as well. The reason why we're concentrating on this level of workforce housing is because it is almost virtually unsubsidized. And what has happened to the middle class in our area, as well as a lot of other places around the state and country, is that even if you're earning a fairly decent wage, your ability to actually live here and afford a home, much less afford rent, has become more and more of an issue. And so we really wanted to speak to that group of folks who are filling a certain part of our socioeconomic and workforce spectrum that we know is really important. So our campaign on social media targeted that. We hired an expert in land use and specifically residential development, who helped inform a countywide effort to put together a collaborative platform for both local policymaking and the state legislature of that's the what and what can we do about it? And we want to talk about that a little bit after we do the presentation. Also, we put together a website, it's an accessory dwelling unit website, that really walks folks through how to permit, finance, manage, build, an ADU on your property. And it's mostly geared toward the city of Bend regulatory process, permitting process. And we're hoping, once things get all ironed out with the countywide level, to also support your programs as well.
Katie, I thought that was fabulous, what you did with the ADU, your education. Have the numbers of the applications for permits gone up in the city? Because I was shocked, it was like less than 500, I think, before you did that program.
Right, I talked with Eric King, the city manager, last week, and they've seen some uptick, and I've asked him for some specific numbers in the future. In addition to that, though, we've had over 4,000 discreet hits on that website alone, with folks wanting to do research on how to make this happen, yeah. In addition to that, we've done other things that, working with developers around town, for example, helping them through their permitting process, talking to them about embedding childcare in multifamily development, and basically trying to streamline how folks get through the permitting process as best we can. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. But then we decided to do another body of research, and this year really focused on the economics and the workforce components of what we mean by the impacts of the lack of housing. So the purpose behind this survey, it was an Atwell survey, so we pushed it out to City of Redmond and City of Bend, registered businesses. We also pushed it out through EDCO, our partners there, and several other organizations to get it out far and wide. We received 227 discreet responses and a whole list of folks who want to know more and participate in this going forward. And really wanted to find out, not only is housing one of the big issues for our lack of workforce, and number two, to what degree, but also what kind of effect is that having on the employer themselves? Are they making less money? Is their business not thriving, or are they doing okay without the same workforce they used to have? And then how does that translate to the Deschutes County economy? So is the revenue going down? And is that something that we're going to see manifest itself over the coming years because of the lack of housing and the lack of employees equalling the lack of revenue taken in? So with that, John, I'm going to let you take this away. I think each of you have in your packet a copy of the workforce housing PowerPoint that we're going to go through. And John, with Echo Northwest, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, all right, well, thank you Katie. Hello Commissioners, John Toponia, I'm a senior policy analyst and past president of Echo Northwest. And we were delighted to be able to collaborate with the Bend Chamber on this work. It actually followed some work that we did with the State Higher Education Coordinating Commission on workforce. And we were starting to pick up signals that housing was, and high housing costs was a challenge at the state level, and really are not surprised to have found an even sort of louder signal here in the Bend-Redmond region. So why don't we go ahead and step through the slides? First one, just as a context set, this is out of a recent presentation from Josh Lerner, the Deputy State Economist to the legislature. And they are saying that now housing costs have risen so high that they are starting to take this into account as they do long-term projections of the state's economy. So they've got a longstanding concern of housing production, where supportability impacts Oregon's households every day, and could slow down economic growth due to fewer people being able to move here. Big issue, because Oregon has crossed over its natural rate of population growth. The people here, the births minus the deaths on a yearly basis has gone negative. And so the only way the state's going to grow going forward is by being attractive and having some net migration from people from other places. So a big concern here from the Deputy State Economist. If we go to the next slide, you start to hear similar themes coming from local business leaders through this survey. We had open-ended responses. Here you can see, you know, we've lost potential great hires because they cannot afford to move and live in Bend. More and more people need flexible schedules to get kids to and around school and daycare. As a truly small business, I have limited resources to mitigate the cost of living crisis. Constricting market of this nature usually means my employees will seek more consistent work elsewhere. Those are just a couple, we had many to choose from, and a lot of consistent voices on this topic. Let me go ahead and look at some of the data. This will just give you a national comparison. This is an all transaction high house price index that is sort of accrued by a federal agency going back to the year 2000, comparing Bend to U.S. housing. And you can see, you're probably, many of you who have lived there for a while, remember the big run-up before the Great Recession. And then the decline with the Great Recession, and then a run-up, sort of beginning in 2013, through the end of the decade. But look at that sharp increase as you enter the pandemic and then into this post-pandemic period. You've got a, you know, a couple of, a few factors going on here in this most recent period. Bend and the region was attractive to remote workers. And so you had inflows of households that outpaced the construction of new units. You also had with the remote work phenomenon, people looking to buy more residential real estate because they were vacating commercial office space. And then you also had the dynamic of millennials moving into their sort of prime home buying years all at once. And so you do see that national phenomenon of prices starting to take off at the U.S. level, but nothing like what you're seeing in the Bend-Redmond region. So, big pressure, all of you are familiar with that. Let's go. This gives you a sense across different industries. So we're looking at census data here and the industry of employment of the household ed. And estimating the share, or calculating the share of those households who are cost burden, meaning that they are spending more than 30% of their gross income on, in this case, on a mortgage. These are homeowners, but it'll give you a flavor, and you would see similar data if we were able to get it for renters. High cost-burdening rates for those in the accommodation and food service sectors and retail trade, manufacturing, and on down the list. Essentially what that means for a household is that it is, you know, it's crowding out if you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing. It's crowding out other essentials, food and daycare, way down the list would be any ability to save for retirement or do things like take a vacation with your family. So just really stressful situations here. Again, these are sort of census data that we're pulling these from, but you're going to hear similar themes coming from the employers. All right, next slide. So as Katie introduced, we did do an employer survey. Give you a sense of what we're looking at here in terms of the next slide. We conducted it during September, October 2022. We've got 201 responses on this slide, Katie mentioned 227, we're in that range, well over 200. We were very pleasantly surprised with how many folks, you know, replied on this one. 20 different industrial sectors were represented in responses. We got, you know, pretty nice distribution of responses across industries. And you can see the Chamber and its partners who distributed the survey and helped get it out to folks. So what did they say? And I guess, I was expecting responses along these lines, but not quite as loud as they came back. 81% of respondents saying that the high cost of housing severely impacted their ability to hire. So making direct relationship between housing costs and the ability to bring workforce in. Again, you know, this is a period of time, post-pandemic, that is one of the tightest labor markets in U.S. history across the country. But this region is suffering disproportionately because it's also fighting with the structural issue of high housing costs. We'll go to the next finding. 83% of respondents have said they have increased wages to mitigate the high cost of living and housing for their workforce. So they have pushed, what they would say is sort of moved a little bit above and beyond where they might like to go with wages. And of course, if you've got high housing inflation, that's incenting employers to pay higher wages, you could end up in a bit of an upward spiral there. And that's, you know, that's certainly concerning for inflation generally as inflationary pressures of housing translate into wage inflation. That can just keep going and get out of hand. Next slide. 91% of respondents said the high cost of housing limited their growth and strained their existing workforce. And we're going to, we're going to get into a little bit of detail on that with some future slides when we go to the next slide. Here's the kinds of things that employers have attempted to do to mitigate the hiring shortage. They have offered competitive wage and benefit packages. They have expanded the talent search to a broader geographic area. And this one sort of cuts, you know, it cuts both ways. You know, the region has been an attractor for remote work and pulled in people that have competed for housing. But now employers are sort of stretching that look. And if you sort of look at this next bar as well, allowed more flexibility in remote or hybrid work. Maybe Bend-located businesses that are able to do it are looking outside of the region for their employees. So that's something we're going to have to pay attention to. They've got signing bonuses and the like. So they're clearly feeling like they're responding to this cost of living stress they have in the community. Next slide. And then hiring wages, or the hiring shortages have reduced functioning. So they've talked about all the different ways that they have had to sort of cut back or lower the, from their perception, the quality of service because of the lack of staff. They're serving fewer customers, they're reducing the product or service quality, et cetera. So it is pushing in to the quality of what they are doing, which is obviously problematic. Next slide. 66% of respondents experienced a decrease in revenue due to the hiring shortage, and most of those were small businesses. We have a little bar chart here, I think, on the next one that shows how that plays out. So if you start on the left-hand side, that's the share of businesses of different sizes. The teal-colored bar are the smallest businesses, the sort of the dark red bar are the larger businesses. On the left, you've got the biggest percentage decrease in revenues, on the right, the least. So you see that those, you know, a good number of those very small, less than a million-dollar businesses saying that they lost more than a quarter of their revenue because of the high cost of, high cost of living in the region. But then a good share of all of them, if you look at sort of that third panel, sort of evenly sized shares of businesses reporting that they lost between 5% and 10% of revenue, which is no small amount. And obviously then translates into, you know, that translates into employment, and it translates into lower tax revenues as well. We'll go to the next slide. 37% of respondents have considered direct housing interventions. Some even going as far as considering building or purchasing workforce housing. Others looking at down payment assistance and other kinds of more direct responses for their employees. So clearly, clearly a major issue. It is, you know, when you start to see things like 80% to 90% of businesses coming back and saying that they've got something in that local environment that is an impediment for their ability to serve the customers that they want to or to grow. It is something that public policy needs to be paying attention to. So then, Katie, did you want to take on these last couple of pieces? I can speak to this one.
Go ahead, you can keep going, you're doing great.
Okay, sounds good. So this is, you folks may be aware, House Bill 2003 passed in 2019, started something called an Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Framework, where there was sort of a statewide look at how much housing was needed across the state. And has recently come out with sort of an updated estimate of the need for about, well, 3,156 units constructed annually for the next 20 years to reach that Bend-Redmond metropolitan service area, a statistical area, needs. And that is looking at all different income levels. There's sort of specific targets for affordable housing, there are specific targets for housing that would serve the homeless, et cetera, in those. But that's the number, if this region and if this state wants to start to move out of its affordability and homelessness crises, we're going to have to see production much closer to that level than what we've seen in recent history. So then, from a policy perspective, I think this one, this one's yours.
This is where we'll take over, John, thanks so much. And just to reiterate, what we found is housing is causing a problem with workforce. Employers are trying to do something about it. But clearly, this is a bigger problem than individual employers are able to handle. And this is where we all get together from the private-public standpoint of trying to figure out some solutions policy-wise and strategy. And with that, Sarah has been working with the collaborative group across the region. We've had a couple of workforces, work sessions so far. And if we could go through this shortlist of some of the policy recommendations, that would be great.
Thanks, Katie. So what you see on the screen before you are just a couple of the recommendations that the group that Katie referenced before pulled together. Both Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Chang were at our last meeting wherein we took a look, and as well as Nick, for the county. We're all at our last meeting where we looked at a wide variety of issues that had been identified in a prior work session, as well as through key informant interviews and just general landscape policy surveys throughout the summer and the early fall. And four buckets kind of rose to the top, three of which are represented here today, but I'll go through all four of them. And you also have a supplemental document in the handout that we prepared that kind of summarizes the bigger picture. But the four big key policy areas are reducing barriers to build, increasing supply, both for rental and for ownership properties, enhancing funding streams, that could be existing funding, that could be new funding, and then general improvement of administrative efficiencies. So how can we get to someplace quicker and cheaper? So those four really kind of rose to the top in terms of the ways that policy levers could be implemented to potentially move the needle. As Katie likes to say, it's not, it's not a single shot, it's buckshot that we're throwing up at the wall, right? So we're trying a whole variety of different options to see how we can get to that 3,000 number on an annual basis, because that is a big, big, big goal that the region needs to come to. So for the purposes of our discussion today, we pulled out three or four of the key findings from the last workshop that pertain to local government policy. And so we'll go through those, and that's what's represented on the slide. Excuse me, the first is to look at increasing supply. So the group talked about a couple of different options in terms of how do we go ahead and increase supply. One is to talk about employer housing projects. So that was something that John presented in his work, that I think it was 37% of employers are looking at. How do we develop workforce housing? What does that look like? So how does that translate to our work? That looks like pilot programs and pilot projects. We're currently looking at a variety of different options partnering with both public and private and nonprofit to address what would be the key barriers and how do we go about putting together a pilot program for workforce housing for some of our larger employers here in the region. So more to come on that. But I think there's definitely an appetite in looking at what can employers do to provide workforce housing for their employees, to help them with recruitment and retention. The second policy solution is looking at what kind of land do we have? We have a lot of land, but there's a lot of restrictions with that land. And so the group talked about not only doing a survey of public land, so county-owned land, city-owned land, school district land, but also private land, and coming up with a large-scale look at the region of what is our current environment in terms of buildable land? And then looking at, are there options for zoning that need to be taken place? How do we, how do we, knowing the bigger picture, then theoretically look at putting policy solutions into place to actually utilize that land in some of the pilot projects or other types of things moving forward? So when we look at the next category, it's enhancing funding streams. There's been a lot of talk in the community around a housing bond. What would a housing bond look like for our community? Would that be particularly focused on affordable, big A affordable housing? Could that also encompass workforce housing? Would that look at the entire continuum, including shelters and things of that nature for our houseless population? So that's at the beginning phases, but I think that's something that the group, when we had our workshop, really identified some interest in moving forward in terms of this could be a potential solution, again, one of many, to raise some additional funds for workforce-specific housing. And then the last on the list, at least from a county perspective, is taking a look at different AMI levels for different programs at the state level, and ensuring that they match up with some of the definitions that you all have at the county level, as at the city level as well, to some degree, in terms of where does that AMI hit for some of the programs that the county is administering? So traditionally, it has been an up to 80% of AMI, and we're seeing a shift in some of the funding programs and different streams that is a shift in some of, of the funding programs and different streams that is at the state level, up to one hundred and twenty percent, which is where our focus of our work has been in terms of that workforce housing band, kind of that missing middle of the eighty to one-twenty. So taking a look at, doing a policy audit of are there options to move up that AMI range to have the upper band of the workforce housing? So that's just a very quick overview. I know we have just a couple minutes left on your agenda, but we'd certainly welcome any questions and then ongoing partnership and collaboration. Excuse me. Our idea for this global document, as I shared with the group, we shared with the group back in November, is to develop a cohesive platform for Central Oregon. So we, we all may not agree on every policy solution that needs to be taken at the state or the local level, but there are enough, as represented here and represented in this document, that I think the majority of stakeholders in the room can agree upon. So how can we collaboratively put together a policy platform that all organizations, public, private, nonprofit, developers, environmental groups, kind of the whole gamut of diverse interests can come together and say, these are things that are good for our region, and we can advocate with you all at the local level, but then also give that to our good representatives and senators that are advocating in Salem for our unique needs out here. So that's our next step with this, as we move into the 2023 long session in January. And we look forward to continuing to partner with you all to help actually take some action and move some of these things forward.
So Sarah, you know, Senator Kanoop is working on that manufactured home park on fifty-seven acres. It is privately owned, but I can imagine that when the details get worked out, that a lot of, you know, employers can buy some of those units, it really would be, I, I can imagine, helpful for their workforce. When you talk to people that run businesses and they, that's, they're desperate. They really can't find housing for their people. But one thing I remember from that workshop we were at, they were talking about insurance for condos. Was that during the construction of the condos, that that insurance is way out of line, or I kind of missed that part of that discussion?
Sure. So, so this is, we're talking about vertical homeownership and condo development. And so when you're taking a look at, and I'm not a development expert by any stretch of the imagination, but this is what we understand from the policy discussions that have been had. There is a long tail of liability when a developer builds a vertical unit for a number of reasons, just construction, there's multiple layers of ownership in terms of, you know, the different, the, the actual different layers of ownership, but then also the land piece. And so the liability insurance has a, up to a ten-year tail on that, which can be challenging for a developer to make that type of arrangement pencil. And it also exposes them to additional liability for an extremely long period of time and can be concerning. So that is really brought, from what, what we understand in talking to some of the state-level folks, the Oregon Home Builders Association, that's really brought condo development as an entry level to homeownership, really to us reaching halt because of the liability issue. So we do know that there's an LC that's been drafted. I don't remember the number of it offhand, but the home builders are going to be running it this year, similar to what has been proposed in the past, to take a look at kind of front-loading some of the choices in development to help offset some of the potential liability on the back end.
Okay. And then, you know, my other little plan was, you know, our big parking lot out here with the lit Christmas tree. We could do actually four floors of development over two, two floors of parking there. Because I was, I think it was Seth Anderson was at the meeting, and I was sitting by, and he says, oh, no, Patty, you can do four floors. So, you know, and yet, we've had discussions here. We're not in that business. But is there a private partnership that we could do, or is there other county land that we could do something like that on? And I, you know, it's really, it seems like it's taken so long. When you look at Colorado, and that's what Vale and Aspen did in order to address their issues. And I remember, maybe the first year I was a commissioner, we had someone coming in with this one hundred and twenty percent, they wanted to build like an apartment building, but they could not find any help for that. And now we realize that's really, you know, that's another one of our gigantic needs that we need to come through on. So, yeah, we've got to find that, we've got to find a partnership so that we can get going with something.
No other comments?
Well, so, yeah, I was just thinking, you know, the CPAYS program, something that Deshute County put in, so for people that want to offset the cost of construction for highly efficient opportunities while building. So the county's done some of that. You know, land use, government-owned land for deed-restricted housing projects. We are down, down to a spot where there, we're not like holding on to the magic parcels that we're just not letting go of. I mean, it's kind of all been flushed through the system. So we need to get the next level of, you know, what land are we talking about? You know, there's a lot of UGB work that was done in the city of Bend, and it's going to come online in the future, you know. So there's, it's like we might be at the narrowest path where it is going to open up a little bit. And I don't know that for sure, but some of the land that's going to come online here, the near future is going to be pretty exciting. And then, you know, when we talk about increasing supplies, just having those trades people out there ready to go too. So just some thoughts on, you know, I agree with everything that's presented here. Thoughts on what else we can be doing, and we've all got to be working together on this. It's an interesting time. COVID really did trigger the, the, kind of the transition from some people that might have lived in more urban-dense areas, or anywhere in the West Coast, and they ended up here, or in other rural areas like this. And it, it just changed the whole dynamics of the whole situation here. So I want to, you know, thank the Chamber of Commerce for studying this, defining it, looking for specific action items. You know, for a believer in simple supply and demand economics, you know, the land is the tricky part. And I've said it before, our state land use system, we're really proud of keeping the rural rural and putting people in the cities, but the carrot, the, the motivation of having a parcel with a little bit of elbow room, that's something we could add to this equation, too. And I'm not talking urban sprawl from everywhere in Central Oregon, but just some opportunities for a little bit of land. But thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I would like to thank the Chamber for taking these issues and these, these problems very seriously, and kind of shining a light for our community forward on, in terms of your analysis and in terms of your policy recommendations, because the situation, you know, basically, the, the conditions that we have and the strategies that we're, that we're currently using are producing some housing, but not enough. And I, I really appreciate that you have this sort of four-plank approach to these issues, including, you know, that, that, you know, we, we spend an awful lot of time talking about land supply here on the, on the dais at the Board of Commissioners, and that is a, a consideration. But, you know, I, I would point out again that there is a whole lot of land inside the urban growth boundary of the city of Redmond and the city of Lepine. And, you know, frankly, there's a, there's a pretty decent chunk inside the urban growth boundary of the city of the Bend that we're not getting filled with housing. And in, in my opinion, the reason for that is because building stuff, building infrastructure, building actual homes is really expensive. So we need to not just look at regulations and land supply, but we need to look at where those missing dollars come from that help us create the missing middle. The, you know, basically, you know, if land is expensive, construction is expensive, and STCs, infrastructure are expensive, you know, to, to, to take those three big expenses and translate it into something that's attainable for the local workforce is really difficult. And so I, I believe we really need to be looking at public investment to, to, to close the gap and to, to actually produce the housing we need. We were just talking about ADUs at the beginning of the discussion here. You know, I, this is something that I, I have personally experienced. I built an ADU on top of my garage four years ago. And, you know, I can, I can attest that it is not a, it's not a great investment. You know, if you've got that kind of money to, to, to put into something, and you want to return, that's, that's not where you're going to put the money. Your, your people who are building ADUs are motivated by other things, like, you know, needing a place for their, their aging parent, or their, their kid who's coming home from college to, to live. And frankly, I don't think that we're going to see, you know, you, the, the ADU guide that, that the Chamber produced, I think, is, is incredible contribution. But I don't think we're going to see a huge scale up in ADU production until there is financial assistance, you know, or, or kind of, we can create some kinds of partnerships where there's public investment, or, you know, some other kind of, you know, maybe employer investment to help share the costs of building the ADU to make it actually a viable opportunity for, for homeowners. So, and, so basically, all of this, all of the, the housing that we are so concerned about, I, I am really interested in finding out, figuring out how we can get the dollars into, into those, into those projects so that they, they can happen, and they can happen at the scale we need them at. Because talking about land supply and regulation isn't enough. So thank you for making that part of your, you know, one of your four planks, of, of your four plank policy.
Welcome. Really appreciate your time today.
Chair, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
Thank you. I just want to also appreciate all the work that you're doing, because I think about this on behalf of our twelve-hundred county employees, and how critical it is to provide the critical services to our residents. And we are experiencing the perfect storm. We're both retaining, doing everything we can to retain the employees we have, but we're also, as the fastest-growing county in the Western US, if not, you know, one of the fastest in the country, we're, we're still growing. And so we're continuously trying to add staff to meet the, the needs and demands of our growing population. My question is, and I hear this frequently, is we, we need to provide housing up to eighty percent. Now we need to provide housing up to one hundred and twenty percent. I've lived in a resort community in Colorado. Is one hundred and twenty percent high enough, or is it really one hundred and fifty percent? Because we're not a typical community. And I don't, nothing, I mean, in the best possible way in the Willamette Valley, where there are a lot of communities of different sizes, and they can share employees. We're an isolated region. And I'm just, I just, I really, I really wonder, is one hundred and twenty percent as high as we should go, or should we really be expanding to eighty to one hundred and fifty percent? I'm just curious what the economics may tell us about that. Thank you.
We agree with you. We, we actually talked about one hundred and fifty percent AMI. The challenge is getting ubiquitous support from the state, the county, and local on that number to access those funding streams. That's, and there's reasons behind that. And one of the biggest reasons is, as the state experiences decreases in revenue, having a pot of money that's, that's small enough as it is, that's targeted right now up to the eighty percent, and now they just leapfrogged a few programs up to one twenty percent, without increasing that pot of money, it's going to be a real challenge to, to, to get it diversely dispersed. And when the need is so great at every level, and one would argue, if you're below eighty AMI or sixty AMI, it would be really hard to take that money out of those hands and put them into another that's earning one fifty or one twenty. So we all landed on one twenty following the state's lead. And it's a heck of a lot better than eighty, but you're right, it's not enough. Yep.
So according to an article I just referenced, five hundred and sixteen permits have been done in the city of Bend in the last five years, a total of over seven hundred since two thousand and one. I think it's great what you, the energy you put into it, and hopefully with those four thousand hits, more people are going to follow through with that. I know we have a kit person that can, you can just get your kit, makes it really easy, take out the hassle. And then in the county, if we can separate seven sixty-two, you know, the fire bill from our ADU bill, we have an opportunity to do maybe, let's say, nine thousand, eight thousand, something like, accessory dwelling units. So it's, maybe it's, you know, it's time that we can, we can go forward. Our, our housing needs are tremendous. Your number of thirty-one fifty-six, I read somewhere we needed five thousand units a month, but you guys are really more comfortable with this thirty-one fifty-six, Sarah?
Well, I think that's the shortage that we're at right now. But we're saying, projecting out, making up for what, what we've, we are already behind, and then projecting future need. It's thirty-one hundred for twenty years.
Twenty years. Wow.
In the, in the Bend, Redmond, MSA.
Yes, in this MSA.
Great.
That doesn't include Sisters in the Pine.
Right.
So five thousand isn't really off.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty severe. And Commissioner Devown, to your point about the lack of workforce, it's, that is a real and present issue that, that we have to keep our eye on as well, as we're trying to keep up with this demand.
Because you see, everybody's shutting their, you know, closing their hours. They're closed on Tuesday, or they're closed on Monday and Tuesday, or they're closed on Wednes. I mean, everybody is trying to keep their workforce. And then I know the people, more Americans than ever before in the history of our country are working more than one job. So, you know, when somebody, you know, somebody that doesn't, oh, you know, their restaurant isn't open on Wednesdays, and those people go somewhere else and work. So it's really, people are really under incredible strain. Because your numbers were from twenty-one, and I'm sure the numbers today would be even worse. You know, your economic numbers of the percentages. It's tough out there.
I just wanted to speak from the employer perspective. I, I mean, like, I, I've only recently begun to understand how, how local governments are literally, we are cannibalizing each other because the costs of living here are so expensive that, you know, it's kind of like, well, you know, the school district, and you know, the, you know, somebody in the Redmond School District could try and recruit from, somebody from, you know, outside the region to come here who's qualified, and that's great. And then when they hear about how much it costs to, to live here, they, they pull their application. And then, so that person from, you know, the Redmond School District is trying to steal teachers from the Ben Lepine School District. And, you know, we, we definitely experience that in the county. I know the Sheriff's Office, you know, among law enforcement agency, local law enforcement agencies, they're, you know, they're cannibalizing each other, too. And if there was an opportunity for us to provide employee housing, you know, through some of these local government agencies, or if there was just, you know, a whole lot more reasonably-priced housing available in the region, you know, we have these opportunities to bring talent in from outside the region to kind of meet our growing demands, just like you're, just like you're finding from, you know, businesses through your survey. But, you know, being a public sector employer, it's kind of a, a raw, raw deal time as well.
Yeah.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We will be discussing this in the future, and I know we need, we need to get together with more collaboration with your group. So thank you for coming today.
Okay, item number four. Robert? And your team?
Yay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a great news story for you today. This is a recognition of all the work that our finance staff does on our annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And this is, I'm just holding up a copy of our 2021 report. About a year ago, we submitted this to the Government Finance Officers Association, and they review our financial report over nineteen different categories. And we prepare this report based off of forty-four pages of a checklist of very detailed items on what has to be included in this report. So we did receive just this month recognition from the GFOA that they have granted us, again, the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Achievement for the twenty-first year in a row, which is a great accolade to the county. And here we have Janet Kane and Cam Sparks, two of our members of the finance team who worked on this. We do have another member who couldn't be with us today, Casey Harden. Now Janet does the heavy lift, lift for the entire ACFER. However, it does take a full-team effort to produce this report every year. And of course, we know these financial reports have been audited as well, and we know that we all, it got a clean, unmodified opinion on it as well. So they're doing a really great job there. The, this certificate, it is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attaining represents a significant accomplishment of this achievement, and that's directly from the GFOA. So they, they really recommend that you bring this before the, your public body, your governing body, Board of Accounting Commissioners, in a press release. And I do- And I do have certificates here also for Janet and for Cam Sparks as well because we do want to recognize all their hard work as well and we wanted to allow the Commissioners the opportunity to meet them as well. So just.
And then do they get a trip to Disneyland?
And maybe a photo opportunity too.
I mean, like, there should be some, 21 years. Disneyland, don't you think? Twenty-one years in a row.
I'm sure that's how they feel, yes.
Well, I can imagine.
A trip to Mount Bachelor. Well, congratulations, you know, a lot of, lot of moving parts into Shute's County these days, just like we were talking about housing and the cost of housing and people coming and going, new leadership. Thank you very much for staying focused. It's really exciting to know that we can really get down to the penny, and this is down to the penny on everything that comes through the county and be awarded for it. So congratulations and thank you so much, 21 years. It kind of makes me think, what if we didn't get that award? Would we be in panic mode or what? But that has not happened. Thank you.
The Government Finance Officers Association are not the only people who think you're excellent.
There you go.
Definitely. So are we doing a photo then? I know Eric's in the room. Okay, so photo time? Yes. Maybe you should go to Hudu, let's see. Hudu, Disneyland, I don't know.
Hold up.
So where's Casey today?
She is remote.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, Casey, get in the picture.
She had an appointment.
Okay, darn it.
All righty, three, two, one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. That is 21 years, that's pretty much inevitable, isn't it?
I wanted to make sure there was no chance I was in the photo.
I imagine. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming. See you in a few minutes, Robert.
Yes, that's right.
End of the agenda.
I see that we have Joe Brandage, Michael Schultz. Hey, we're, we're all here today. Who's in charge then? No, I meant, who at the jail, since you're here?
We got good teammates.
We got a team there.
Okay, all right. Thank you for joining us and thank you for our most recent tour. That was great.
You're welcome.
Yes.
We are here because we need to add two positions for licensed nurse practitioners. And specifically, we have, we are entering into an agreement with Ideal Options, who received a grant from Measure 110 funding to run or administer a medication assisted treatment program in our jail. And as part of that, they will pass through the funds for these two LPN positions for us. And we're really excited about getting this program off the ground. Captain Schultz has worked for a while to get it going and so I brought them if you have any questions about it or anything to talk more about the program. There's not much to the adding of the positions, but I'm happy to ask, answer questions if you have any.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, I remember when we were there the other day, you had mentioned that if someone wanted help and they wanted to go to rehab, that we actually had stepped up, the sheriff had, and sent people onto rehab. And I just thought that that was really encouraging to know.
Yeah, one of the, one of the reasons why, you know, we came is because we believe this program is very valuable to those who are suffering from addiction. And it's one of the only ways, you know, as you know, we're just, we just don't want to hold people and let them go. We'd like to be able to change their behavior if we have them, change them for the betterment of the community so, and to stop recidivism. So one of the things with this program, and we wanted to highlight it and that's why Lieutenant Gill and I wanted to come, because we're hoping this will be the first phase of something with drug and alcohol addictions, that we're able to provide some type of recourse. And that's even for somebody doing a longer time, a month with us, or even the very first 24 hours of them coming into our custody where we can screen them. And if they really want help, now we have a plan to give them some MAT, Medicated Assisted Treatment, where they can get some medication to start their program and then follow up with therapy on the outside. And we're partnering with Ideal Options. And we're hoping this is going to help change our community to get some of these folks that are truly just in the addiction process, to get them to, so I want out of this lifestyle. And I, not only do I think it's going to be good for the population entering our system, I really think it's going to be good for our staff, our deputy sheriffs, be able to make a difference, finally seeing a difference. Instead of going out, meeting them, bringing them to jail, going back out, we start seeing change in our community and that, that keeps hope for all of us and makes our day go a lot better when we see somebody out of this system.
Great, thank you. When, when people from our Health Services Department come to talk about expanding or adding new programs, I always grill them about the evidence for the effectiveness of the kind of program that they're proposing. And so it would only, it's only fair for me to grill you too. And if you don't have, you know, if you don't have like research or studies at your fingertips, like I'll take it later. But, you know, and I, I very much believe in, in the kinds of approaches that you're, that you're, that you're talking about as well. But, you know, just to be consistent, I gotta, I gotta ask you for the evidence.
Yeah, you know, and that's a good point. Data is important in our job. I don't have the data with me here today, of course. Ideal Options is, is a national organization that deals in this and many of our other county partners, we thought we'd be one of the first, but as you know, we struggled finding a nursing person do it and we created this new job class, LPN, that we can maybe find somebody in, in our county to help with our medical director. But success really is bearing how many numbers of individuals that once they start the program are able to change their ways for at least five years. You know, not all the time people who go into sobriety make it for, you know, forever. Sometimes they have setbacks, which is okay, as long as we can get them back into the program again. But I think it's important as we move forward to be able to provide that data and we certainly will be collecting that. From, from the day an individual enters our facility, we're going to be asking them questions, do you want to have a change in your life? We can help you with that. In, in the past and right currently, we really don't have much. We have the stabilization for mental health, for drug addiction, we do have treatment centers and a release planner, but this will be the first time that we're going to say, we really want to commit because now we're going to bring a provider in with our partners to get you started on this program right away. We're excited about it. It's something the sheriff has wanted for a number of years. We're finally have the, actually the state having money to be able to get us, get some funding for us. We're going to be able to implement a program the sheriff has been wanting to do for quite some time. But data is very important.
So, so on the intake or like on the plugin end, we have Measure 110 now, so these are not likely to be people who are, are going to jail for possession. They will have other, you know, committed other crimes that are severe enough that they're landing there, but you will be, for one way or another, you'll, you'll, you'll be asking them about their interest in, in medication assisted treatment. And so, yeah, so how does that work? Like, how do you, how do you know that this is a person? Do you just ask everybody or do you, do you, you identify people who you're like, that this person's criminal behavior is associated with substance use as well?
This, this will be open to all, everybody coming in and will be part of our booking screening and we'll be looking for those. Of course, individuals are to, that are not stable, they may not be able to tell us or not be ready. But it will be, you know, once, once they come in, it could be somebody that's going to go to prison and get started in the program, that we have an LPN or a nurse coming in to administer the, the medication to get them stable, at least then to start thinking about what their outcomes are. It could be somebody for 24 hours where they come in, they want it, and then we give them direction exactly where to go with a mentorship program at our front door upon release. But it's really to be able to talk to individuals that, that are just struggling or, or maybe not able to talk about the time. Some of the charges that we expect to see are going to be trespassing, are going to be disorderly conduct, it may not be drug charges. But it's going to be all those other type of things that if drugs have gone, it could be theft. Even if it is some, a felony type crime, a person-to-person crime, those individuals will have an opportunity while they're in our custody. Part of it too is we're seeing the courts allowing with the, you know, cruel and unusual punishment with individuals suffering through withdrawals, that we're able to stabilize them while they're going through withdrawals and get them on a different program. Because that's always the fear for an addict is going through withdrawal. And, and this will give us an attempt to help them and hopefully enough with therapy, medication to change their behavior in the future.
Can I give you a little bit of data? So the research we have says that 63% of people in jails meet the criteria for drug dependence or abuse. And so we see the jail as, you know, the people in the jail are there because the programs that the community offers has not helped them. They've fallen through the cracks or they've avoided it. And so we have the option of housing them and then letting them go try and see if the programs catch next time, or getting them, introducing the program and getting them on that. So I think we, you know, we have an obligation, I almost feel, to be that provider since we are the recipients of so many of these people. And we will get data as we go forward, are we able to make a difference? And that, that will, the time will tell.
Right, right. Yeah, no, and, and data about who is coming in or who is there, that, that's helpful. But when I, when I asked about evidence, you know, it's basically like you're, this is an intervention and it's, you know, I'm sure that there is a lot of experience with this intervention in other places and hopefully it's intervention, you know, it's experience in other places that's demonstrating success. And so it's just great to have, whenever you're talking about hiring, hiring personnel, spending money, it's good to have the, you know, we have, we have the evidence from this other place that if you do this, you're going to get this outcome. And that, it would be great to have, you know, some, some backup on that. And again, this is just, we, you know, this Board of Commissioners scrutinizes health services proposals very, very hard. And so it would be, it just, it wouldn't be fair if we just kind of like, like took your word for it.
No, I agree. We're lucky this is a grant that's coming through. So it's very nice that Ideal Options chose us to partner with. And the nice thing about our sheriff's office is we're open to those individuals from the outside to try to make our community better. Our job is to open the doors for them to do their great work and then our deputies to, to be able to be part of that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it sounds, it sounds great and I'm supportive. I just gotta, gotta get the evidence. And I'm also, you know, I'm reading in this, in this staff memo that this is, the source of this funding is Measure 110. So it's, it's, Measure 110 is a very tangled, it's a very tangled policy. And as, as, as we look towards the next session and the next legislative session and people are trying to figure out, you know, what reforms are needed, I hope we, to the extent that Measure 110 is providing funds to build certain kinds of treatment capacity in our community, I hope that that's a piece that everybody continues to remember.
So this is two positions, kind of fully funded position, full, you know, full rate position, so we're looking at $87,000, which is two half-years to get to there. So we're looking at double that for the next fiscal year. This is a Measure 110 funding that Ideal is bringing the money to us to fund these and these are going to be permanent. It's like, is something starting that's just going to?
It would be a one-year contract with Ideal Options.
12 months.
And then hopefully renewing it. But because of our situation with the nursing positions we have open, we wanted to maintain some flexibility and talking to county HR, they recommended we just do full, permanent positions.
Okay. So yeah, one year at a time is going to be the starting point. And half of that is $87,000 for this fiscal year. I'm supportive, let's see what's going to happen here. It's interesting watching, you know, Measure 110, there's a lot of funds somewhere and this is a little bit of a feedback loop that hopefully we can do good things there. So thank you very much for your efforts and we all do want to be able to help people that are ready for help. At the moment, they're ready for help.
And definitely you have them where you can talk to them and they have to listen to you at least at that moment in time. And of course, if, if they're not ready, maybe a day or two later, they can listen to you and I, we've got to stop this cycle. Yeah, I just know somebody who died of an overdose. So, you know, it's like, we have way too many overdoses deaths in our, in our state, in our nation at the moment. It's, we've got to do something, we've got to change. What's happening? So do we need a motion today then?
There is a recommended motion.
Okay.
I move approval of two new licensed nurse practitioners to support the new medication assisted treatment program in the adult jail.
And I will second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBown?
Yes.
And the Chair, Bill Chast. So thank you for joining us today and Merry Christmas.
So will these people work in the office with Eden there or?
Yes.
Okay. Like part of the, the medical shop.
Correct. And to your point, the, there's going to be several layers to screening. So we'll do an initial screening when they first come in. We'll have some publications to talk about the program and at classification, we'll talk about it again. So we'll, we'll be in regular conversations with our population to make sure they know about the program.
Here, it'll be exciting to hear stories back in, in a little while, now it's gone.
I think it will.
Okay, Tanya, item number six.
Just reorganize this desk a little. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner, Community Development. I'm here this afternoon to follow up on deliberations concerning psilocybin, time, place and manner text amendments. I provided a memo to the board summarizing the discussion points and kind of the outcomes that occurred last week, which was, we held deliberations on December 14th, so that was last Wednesday. And I prepared a memo for you summarizing those decisions and then there are a couple of ordinances, which I'll explain, that are attached to this for consideration. Both are in emergency and non-emergency versions and I'll, I'll talk through that in a moment, but first I'll just go over those first, those four questions that were the main kind of decision, discussion points from last week. So the first question was what hours should psilocybin service centers be permitted to operate? The direction from the board, or the general direction, it wasn't official votes, just discussion, was to keep the hours as written to match Oregon Health Authority's hours. So that's 6:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. The OHA rules also have language in there for extenuating circumstances and that would be echoed in the, in the code. The second item is should psilocybin manufacturing as a farm and processing uses be allowed in forest zones? So that's F1 and F2 in addition to EFU. The discussion landed on upholding the Planning Commission recommendation, so therefore allowing psilocybin manufacturing in forest zones in addition to EFU. Item number three, which was probably the most significant, was should psilocybin service centers be permitted in destination resorts? This was the one that had a few decisions nested in other decisions, you might recall. So the direction that staff proceeded upon was to allow service centers in destination resorts and manufacturing as an accessory use, all of this as a conditional use, that was one of the decision points. Kind of the second, more minor one was to massage some of the language concerning the need to modify a final master plan or conceptual master plan. There, in testimony we had received, they suggested having a wellness determination essentially determined by the planning director and staff suggested changing this language to make it less dependent on the planning director, so saying. So saying, "In any area approved for commercial services or specialty shops." So that was the little language switch. So the ordinance at hand reflects that language based on the discussion during deliberations. As another note to the destination resort piece, upon staff and legal recommendation, we separated that, the destination resort code amendment language into a separate amend, excuse me, a separate ordinance. So that ordinance is 2022-JAS-015, so that can go on its own track. That was deemed kind of the, the most appropriate way to take in case there are any appeals to basically either part. So they'll keep going, you know, whatever part may not be appealed or may not be, it leaves the, the rest of the TPM intact. Because we know that there was a significant amount of attention focused on the destination resort piece. And finally, number four, was should psilocybin service centers be prohibited as home occupations or as commercial activities in conjunction with farm use? The board direction was to keep the amendments as written, so that therefore kind of maintains those, those options, keeps those doors open, it does not prohibit it. We recognize that it's still going to be a challenging process, but we're leaving that door, those, both of those doors, the home occupation and the commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, as a potential option for psilocybin businesses to pursue on EFU land. So that's a really quick summary of what's provided in these ordinances. So just to reiterate, ordinance number 2022-014 is kind of the bulk of all the TPM, and 015 is the destination resort piece. So in your memo, you'll see those, those all separated out, as I noted, with both emergency and non-emergency provisions. Staff has presented this as a potential for first reading or first and second, if it's unanimous, or any other options. So I'm here for any questions or discussion.
One question I have for yourself and kind of other members of the Community Development Department, are you aware of anyone who is chomping at the bit to submit an application anytime in the next few months?
I am not personally. I might turn to, I don't know, no?
Yeah.
Let the record say everyone shook their head no. Hey.
My knowledge.
I mean, this has been, you know, the TPM has been very uncertain, you know, unpredictable for people. So I, it certainly doesn't surprise me that nobody is, nobody, nobody was predicting what our TPM would look like and has their application ready to go right now. So, you know, that, that definitely plays into my consideration of whether it's important to enact this, you know, on an emergency basis or not. You know, if there's nobody who's, you know, who's ready to, ready to go with their applications, and I, I'm not feeling a great amount of urgency to adopt this on an emergency basis.
And just to clarify, does that, that's in regards to both, both pieces?
Yeah, yeah.
So the question is, do you want to wait and see what OHA actually, have they sent out the final documents? No, they haven't sent them?
Realistically, I, I will say that I don't think the rules that will emerge are really going to directly affect land use a ton. I could be pleasantly surprised, but I think it's more around other operational characteristics that wouldn't necessarily, there might be a little bit of overlap, but I don't think it's going to be a game changer, to be honest. But it is possible, of course, that they could, they could create some rules that might affect these regulations a little bit.
Okay.
I want to thank the Planning Commission and everybody for putting this together. It's interesting that, you know, the effort that was put into place really aligns with the way I see all the parts and pieces of this. As I say, when I first heard the Planning Commission's recommendations, like, is that really where we want to be going? The Juniper Preserve effort is definitely, got some people up in arms. Talked to somebody else this morning. And it's important to understand, this is the big picture of, you know, a new service, you know, Oregon Health Authority is going to be the kind of lead on this. But as I said from the beginning, it's all about the land use, if it's going to be, you know, next to me or not, referring to anybody in the county. So I'm, I'm sensitive to, you know, where, where some of the folks are on this, you know, separating out the ordinance to have a separate piece is, is a, it's an offer. It's like, let's break this into smaller pieces. So I do support this. You know, if we don't have unanimous support for emergency, either way, I'll be supporting it, so we can figure out how we want to proceed.
So you're supporting both 14 and 15, then?
Yes.
And to the destination resort issue, I, I was, I was corresponding with someone this morning as well, and I, it was, it was helpful for them to hear, allowing psilocybin service centers as a conditional use is not issuing them a conditional use permit. That, you know, we, you know, basically we were creating an envelope and then, and then someone still needs to do a specific application, go through a site-specific application, engage with, you know, the concerns of any adjacent landowners or nearby landowners in that conditional use application. And that is, you know, that is the opportunity for, in my mind, that's the opportunity in the, in the Juniper Preserve situation. That's the opportunity for the owners of the commercial portion of Juniper Preserve and the owners of residences in Juniper Preserve to work stuff out, hopefully before they, before they come with a conditional use application. And I'll, I'll hope that that happens. It, you know, as a general rule, I, I would like to see the county, I, I would like it if people would not see the county as the problem solver, but rather, you know, as, as creating opportunities for, for people to work things out and then come and ask us to approve it, whatever, whatever is mutually acceptable to people.
So Commissioner DeBon, then, did you want to make a motion for ordinance number 2022-014?
Well, as I say, I guess it's, I'll make the emergency motion, but if it's not going to be seconded or unanimous, then I'm kind of looking for guidance here.
I mean, do, do you make the motion on an emergency basis? Or do you make the motion first and then decide that's on an emergency basis later?
The, the emergency basis would require the reading of, basically, first and second reading to be combined and then adopted. So that would be part of your motion. So I think it would be helpful to know
Yeah.
if it's going to be approved unanimously before making that motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not inclined to, to second or vote for an emergency adoption.
So with that, I'll move first reading of ordinance number 2022-014 by title only.
I'll second that.
So that means it would not go into effect then for 90 days?
14 days and then 90 days.
Yeah, you have to do a second reading and then 90 days.
Right, okay. So then March 14th or something, I believe, is what?
Yeah.
Do we have an exact date? March 14th?
That's when that second reading would occur.
Okay.
But usually it's two weeks out, 14 days, right?
We have 14 days from today, then?
And then 90 days from that.
So about April 4th.
April 4th?
About. I mean, if second, if reading is January 4th ballpark, I mean, maybe April 3rd, something around there, April 4th, April 5th.
Okay. All right. So any further discussion then? Not as an emergency with a, Commissioner DeBon made the motion, Commissioner Chang seconded that? Any further discussion? So Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And what, what about the other issue, point number three?
If you want to, if you could read by, read the title.
Oh, read the title, but not, just not declaring an emergency, then?
Correct.
All right. And ordinance, amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning to create time, place, and manner regulations concerning psilocybin businesses in unincorpated Deschutes County by title only. And so that, will that ordinance have a different number, then? Or not?
The question I was meaning to ask that, because it will roll over into the next year, do we need to change that ordinance number?
No. No, it's just following up on it, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll just follow that number.
You're going to leave it at 14, no?
Yes.
Okay.
Since we started the process in this year.
All right. And then?
Second ordinance? 22015.
Okay.
So at this time, I'll move first reading of ordinance number 2022-015.
By title only.
By title only.
And you seconded it? Any further discussion?
I guess, you know, I, I could save this till the end or I could save it now, but I, I, I just want to clarify for everyone that this, this package, these two ordinances, they will create a narrow set of time, place, and manner regulations, which provide some opportunity to pursue a psilocybin service center. But I'm, I'm still quite skeptical whether the little, small windows that this, this set of TPM opens up are actually big enough for us to actually get any service centers or not. And that is what the voters asked us, asked us to do, was to provide access to these services. And they asked us to do that twice. So my, my lack of desire to adopt these TPM rules on an emergency basis is, that is the reason that I, I don't think that these rules really provide very much opportunity. And if we don't adopt them on an emergency basis, then come January 2nd, if someone wants to, thinks that a similar use application is a better pathway for them to pursue their, their concept, then they have, they will have 90 days to do that. So this is just kind of providing more opportunities for people to provide different kinds of application approaches to get to their vision of a service center.
Okay, any further comments? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. An ordinance by title only, amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning to create regulations concerning psilocybin business in destination resorts. And I'm really happy that, by title only, I'm really happy that we separated these. I, I feel like it's incredibly important. So thank you for that direction from our staff.
Thanks, Commissioners. So just to follow up, second reading could occur on Wednesday, January 4th. Is the board meeting that day? Is that good with everyone? Okay. Wonderful. Thanks for bearing with staff in this.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Well, these are all new and unique.
This is all my psilocybin. Can you?
Thank you for...
It's in my pile.
Is yours worse or bigger?
Messier.
Messier, okay. Well, I know, I'm looking at this going, hmm.
Thank you, thank you for all your work to get us to this point.
You're welcome.
Even if this isn't the perfect set of, you know, in my opinion, not the perfect set of time, place, and manner roles yet, it's not, you know, we, you had very limited time to work with and a whole lot of uncertainty at the state level, at the community level, and other places. So thank you for your work on this.
Yes, thank you, Tanya. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas as well.
All right. Item number seven. Hello. Yes, here you are. Anthony isn't going to join you then, I guess. He's just going to sit back there. Okay, sounds good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Audrey Stewart, and I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning Department. The item before us today is a work session for the Mark and Plan Amendment Zone Change. The applicant would like to change the zoning of their property from exclusive farm use to multiple-use agricultural, and they have applied for a concurrent change in the comprehensive plan designation from agriculture to rural residential exception area. This is a quasi-judicial process, and it was initiated by the property owner. The subject property is approximately 59 acres in size. It's located just east of Bend on Bear Creek Road. The subject property is made up of two adjacent tax lots, which are under common ownership. Due to a recent expansion of the Bend's urban growth boundary, the subject property is now located just across Bear Creek Road from the city of Bend's UGB. This property to the north was recently added through a pilot program for affordable housing. Due west of the subject property, the city of Bend's UGB is approximately 0.25 miles away. The applicant argues that the subject property does not meet the definition of agricultural land and that it was therefore incorrectly zoned exclusive farm use. The applicant provided a soil study, and this showed that the property is predominantly made up of Class VII and Class VIII soils. A public hearing was held before a hearings officer on September 6, 2022. I received seven written comments leading up to this public hearing, and two members of the public participated and provided oral testimony. The hearings officer weighed the evidence and testimony and recommended approving this application. This hearings officer recommendation was mailed out on November 7, 2022. No new public comments have been received since this notice of the hearings officer recommendation was mailed out. The purpose of today's work session is to set a date for the public hearing. Monday, January 18th is presented as an option, and this date has been vetted within Community Development and with, and with administration. However, staff is open to other hearing dates that the board suggests. Staff would also like direction on whether the board would like to set time limits on oral testimony provided by either the applicant or members of the public. And should the board decide to set time limits, staff will then include that in the mailed notice of the public hearing.
Monday happens to be the 19th? Did you say the 18th? And that's Martin Luther King Day.
Hmm.
And I know that because the Fair Association is having their dinner that evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's a Wednesday, January 18th.
Wednesday, January 18th.
Okay.
Wednesday.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm looking at December. What am I looking at? Okay. Okay, yeah, so the 16th is Martin Luther King Day. Sorry. Okay, so now we're, that's Wednesday.
Correct, so it would be the Wednesday after Martin Luther King Day.
Okay, great.
That is the end of my presentation, and I'm available for any questions or discussion from the board.
Did they ever have water rights on this land?
That's an excellent question. I received the same question via email earlier. They currently have 9.49 acres of water rights.
From COID?
Correct.
So do they grow something on it, then?
The properties had a sort of, some agriculture in the past. We'll, I have copies of my staff report, I can pass that out for the Commissioners. And then sort of, those types of deliberations, we'll save for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
The map shows two, you know, red section in the bottom right, are there two parcels associated with this?
Correct. So it's the two parcels, and together they add up to about 59 acres.
Could you go back to explaining the, the development around the property and the urban growth boundary? So I think you said that now with the, I forget the number of the bill, but that, that urban growth boundary expansion that was accomplished through Jack Ziegler's legislation, that now that development is right on the, on the other, north, to the north, on, right on the other side of?
Correct. I'm actually going to pass out... Correct, I'm actually gonna pass out an updated area map. So this, um, this shows the urban growth boundary in the blue hatched line, and so this has changed since this application was submitted. That property immediately to the north is the, immediately to the north of the subject property, it's about forty-one acres, and that was House Bill four-zero-seven-nine, which was the Affordable Housing Pilot Program, and so it was just brought into the city of Bend. There's a pending application for annexation, but the urban growth boundary has expanded there. And then to follow up on the other part of your question, staff is working on putting together a map of all the recent applications around here. There's been a number of zone changes, urban growth boundary expansions, and so we'll create some sort of visual for that.
And if I, if I'm remembering correctly, the COID rezoned that, that application that just went through, seems like just a few months, maybe, maybe it was a half a year ago or a year ago, that, that's right down here with the canal running through it?
It's, um, it's actually adjacent to the subject property to the southwest.
All right, thank you so much. So it sounds like a good plan, then, January eighteenth, Wednesday, for the public hearing?
Sounds good, thank you for that. And I would also like to confirm whether you would like to set any time limits on oral testimony?
I would believe, what, we usually do, what, thirty? And then three minutes for any participants in the community?
Mm-hmm, and that would be at the discretion of the board.
And then, right.
And for reference, we had two people come and testify at the prior hearing.
Okay, so usually we give them three minutes, and then usually ten minutes for rebuttal for the applicant at the end? They, if they're allowed to do anything at that point in time? And we'll have a really good timer, won't we? It's a new year, and we're going to be, so we're gonna be good. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have a noise variance on our agenda now? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Rachel Vickers, I'm an associate planner with the county. For today, for today's work session, we will be discussing Oregon Department of Transportation's noise variance related to their Tamala Cooley project. This project will take place on Highway twenty between Bend and Sisters, and it extends about three miles. Well, though, while there will be construction during the day, this permit is specific to the construction between ten PM and seven AM. The project will include paving operations, lane extensions, roundabout creation, and other general construction activities. The work is scheduled to take place from January twenty-twenty-three to November twenty-twenty-three. The public hearing for this permit is tentatively scheduled for January eleventh, and staff is prepared to send notice of public hearing and publish to the bulletin. At this time, staff is available for questions.
So we're, this is like eleven months?
Correct.
Okay, and they're gonna be working like five nights a week?
I can have the applicant clarify that at the hearing.
I mean, I just heard from people when somebody dumped a bunch of supplies out in Tamala one night, and the neighbors weren't told, and it was so noisy, and it was just one night.
Well, this will be setting up for the public hearing on this matter. It'll be publicly noticed, will it be noticed specifically to individual property owners?
Correct, so how noticing works for this is we notice those property owners until we get down to sixty decibels of noise.
Expected, okay. Oh, expect, yeah, so they, there's a calculation about expected noise level, and that's where you'll notify.
Correct, yeah, so they gave us, their loudest equipment is about a hundred-and-twelve decibels, so we performed some calculations, which I can go into detail, but we will notice until it drop, the noise drops below sixty.
Great.
Okay, so any other questions? Good. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, we will see you in January, too. Let's hope the ducks have won by then, right? Right, Nick? Yeah, the ducks are gonna win, 'cause look at how great the beavers did. Wow. Okay, we're at number nine. Holly? How's that?
Close.
Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Hallie King, Associate Planner with Deschutes County Community Development. And this next item before you is a work session discussion item for two improvement agreements associated with the Caldera Springs Destination Resort Expansion. And all, and we've got this, these two documents scheduled for consent agenda item for this Wednesday, but just wanted to touch base with you on, give you a little bit of background on both of them before that meeting on Wednesday. So again, this relates to two separate improvement agreements, and I'll give a brief synopsis of each one. The first one is for utilities and road infrastructure related to Phase C one, which is a sub-phase of the larger Phase C, which was approved in May twenty-twenty-two this year, the tentative plat was approved, and so that developer is kind of breaking out Phase C into different sub-phases. And so Phase C one, which this specific improvement agreement is for, covers two subdivisions. One is a thirty-seven lot residential subdivision, and the other is an eight lot overnight lodging unit subdivision, which, just as a reminder, the overnight lodging unit, one lot includes two units, so the eight lot subdivision includes a total of sixteen OLUs. And again, just a reminder for the board, again, this improvement agreement's an option for a developer prior to final plat. If they are unable to construct those required improvements, they can submit for an improvement agreement, which essentially is, offers the county a form of a security in, in the form of a bond, which is calculated at a hundred-and-twenty percent of the cost estimate for those improvements. And so for this specific improvement agreement, it's just over three-point-five million-dollar bond. And legal counsel has reviewed the improvement agreement, and the road department has confirmed the cost estimate that the applicant provided. So that's, again, that's the first one. The second improvement agreement is a little bit different. It's actually for the actual unit construction of four OLUs within Phase A. And the reason that the applicant is having to bond for these OLUs is that the resort, the Caldera Springs Resort as a whole, was required to maintain a two-point-three-to-one ratio of single-family dwellings to overnight lodging units. And up until this point, the development as a whole has actually had a surplus of OLUs, but with the Phase C plat coming, coming through, that surplus is essentially running out, and so the applicant either has to show that they've constructed the required OLUs, or bond for the remaining amount that they need. So again, in this case, they are bonding for four OLU units that are in Phase A, and this was a condition of approval for the Phase C final plat, for them to, to again, either construct the required OLUs or submit for the bond, which they've done, again, in this, in this case, and this specific bond is about, is just over a million dollars. So with that, again, any questions that the board has, or any clarifications, but we'll plan to bring this back on Wednesday this week for a consent agenda item.
No questions. It's a big project, it's been going on a long time, and this is the implementation of it. I was just thinking out loud here about the overnight lodging unit bonding, I'm just wondering if that's like a construction season cycle, you know, it's like it's not a good time to go start a, a construction, and, you know, this will empower sales probably, but that's in their domain, not, not ours.
Yeah, and, and they are actually the developer, they are in Phase A, they are almost done with all the OLUs, they've actually pulled building permits for all of them, but just with the timing of the plat, recordation, they wanna, to bond for the units so that it won't hold up the final plat, but they, it sounds like they're likely to finish those within the first part of next year, so.
So the, uh, almost completed the construction of all of the OLUs?
In Phase A, yeah. Yeah, which-
It's a hundred-and-ninety-six.
That's it, yeah, that's in the existing Caldera Springs Resort in this annexation. I actually have it right here. They have thirty-two, thirty-two total OLU units.
That's all, and the other one?
Sixty lots, yeah.
I don't have any other questions, I mean-
Okay.
Me neither.
You know, the, um, the, the progress on construction seems like a pretty, pretty solid commitment to the, you know, to meeting the OLU requirements, so.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you, Holly, for coming.
Have a good Thursday.
See you on Wednesday.
Yes, thank you.
On consent. Okay, I believe Robert's back in the room for our financial for November. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Robert Tintil, Chief Financial Officer, Finance of our award-winning Finance Department, I should say.
Here you go.
I'm just wondering, did, did you, Lane County have twenty-one years in a row, too?
We did have a good record, they would be, they, I should say, would probably be about the same. I don't, I can't remember exactly where they're at, but it started around two thousand as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the, I will, I believe it's Multnomah County at thirty-eight years, so tough competition. We won't be able to catch up with them, but we're doing a great job.
Yes, you're doing-
Unless they miss a year.
That's true.
Ah.
That's true. All right, so let's talk about our, our finances here, and I'm gonna start out with the Treasury Report again. I hope it's helpful, I find it a little interesting about, let's look at a little macro, economics versus macro statistics that are out there, because again, what happens at the national level does end up coming down and affecting us, especially as we're talking about interest rates. And speaking of that, in December, the feds did meet again, and just last week, they raised the prime, the Fed rate again. Just to speak to that, we started the year between twenty-five and fifty basis points, that was in March, of, March of twenty-twenty-two. We ended the year, now they've raised it four-hundred-and-twenty-five basis points, so we're at the federal funds rate of four-point-two-five to four-point-five-oh. So that is quite a dramatic increase in just, uh, seven increases in the last ten months. They won't meet again until February, I believe, thinking about changing the rates, but now they are, um, the Fed said that rate, rate hikes will be data-dependent, so in that there will be no rate cuts until the Fed is confident that is, that inflation is moving to their two percent goal. Federal Chair Jerome Powell, he reaffirmed that the central bank won't back away from its fight against inflation despite mounting fears of job losses and a recession, and policymakers signaled a peak rate that was far above market expectations and sought to dispel hopes for a rate cut next year. So they are looking at, the majority of those on the panel think maybe five-point-oh-one percent is where they think the top rate may max out, but again, it is really data-dependent when they look at holistically all the data that's coming, coming in. Speak, talking about inflation, they are, they revised their rate higher for price pressures from five-point-four to five-point-six percent in twenty-twenty-two, and for twenty-twenty-three, they raised it from two-point-eight to three-point-one, and then slowly reverting back to their two percent rate in twenty-twenty-five. Of course, that's their goal, that's what they're planning on, but they sent, tend to adjust their forecast when they meet each time as well. Key inflation data report is due out Friday, and it is expected to show a second consecutive month of slower price, price growth. He noted that prices still remain too high, Jerome Powell did, and so they are continuing to monitor that. Also, we need substantially more evidence to be confident that inflation is on a sustained downward path before they think about ever reducing, or when they think about reducing the rates again. So they're really looking at the data, and they recognize we do have a tight labor market and demand outsourced, let's see, with labor demand far outpacing labor supply, as we know and we hear about that all the time. So that's kind of the, the high-level market where we're at, and again, the changes in the Fed rate is what has affected our investment rate here. So now I will get into our packet here that we have. What are we talking about down at our level in Deschutes County? Where is our treasury and investment portfolio? So, and that is in your packet, and hopefully, is it page three-eighty-nine? Do you have page numbers in your packet?
Yep, that's three-eighty-nine.
All right, so I'll, if I refer to those page numbers, that'll be there. All right, so as noted, we are looking at financial reports in this as of November thirtieth, and they're unaudited numbers, but they are accurate according to our records. So the portfolio balance at the end of November was three-hundred-and-fifty-four-point-eight million. It is an increase of sixty million from October, and an increase of fifty-six million from last year at this time. That's due to timing of when we collect the funds and before we distribute them out to the taxing districts, the majority of the increase there. Our net investment income for the month is four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, approximately a hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand more than last month, and three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand more than November of twenty-twenty-one. And again, that's to an increase in the interest rates. So speaking of our interest rates, the pool is one of the measures that we measure against and where we receive interest in. During the month of November, they did increase rates two times, once on November first to two-point-five-oh, and then again on November sixteenth to two-point-eight-five percent. However, they did already in December, they increased it to three-point-one-oh percent. So they also have increased seven times this year from the LGIP. We started this fiscal year at one-point-four-oh percent in July, and now we're up to three-hundred-and-ten basis points. So they are moving higher, and as we get into our financial reports later, when, again, you'll see the funds each time, each month I'm here, it seems like, it's a good trend, right, but we're saying interest rates are continuing to increase, and our interest revenue is more than we had budgeted, you know, a year and a half ago, which is a good sign.
When will our statements be, the final audit be done for last year?
Yeah, they hope to, we should be issuing this week, next week, so they're finalizing it, we're doing all the, it's typically in December, and so we are in the final stages. They're doing the legal review, make sure there's no last-minute liabilities we need to book, and they're, we're checking all the boxes now, so we're hopeful any day now.
Okay, all right. I was thinking it probably-
Yeah, it's the right timing, right timing here. And that is typical for governmental agencies, usually it's by December, and we have to file by December thirty-first as well. December is typically the timeline for a lot of government agencies. Yes?
Just thinking about the, the, the flips, the, the other side of these interest rate increases, and our, our, our pending capital construction project on the, on the courthouse. It, it, so it doesn't seem like, it, it kind of seems like the sooner we can lock in a rate, the better, in, in some ways.
It's, it is a matter of the market timing, as we discussed at the mid-year budget meeting, the interest rate that's projected on the current payments was five-point-oh-seven-five, which was a guesstimate of where the market might be at that time. When we think we'll go out, it, we would get, obviously, we'd get new estimates of what we think when we're ready, but as the, as we start hearing some new numbers, it, it would be good to see what the most current rates are. Now, again, the feds may not increase rates until February, if they do, and, and the thinking is at that time, maybe it's fifty basis points, and not the seventy-five basis points each year. I mean, that's the, or each time they meet, that's the current thinking at the moment. And you're right, the comment had been, if we would have financed, you know, just like a home, a homeowner, if I would have refinanced or bought my house, you know, a couple of years ago, I would have been two-and-a-half percent now, and I'm at seven percent, or whatever someone may be looking at. It's the same scenario for public funding.
But is there, I, I mean, I know that we need, we need to be a certain- and, and of the building to, to, to be able to go out for our financing, but I mean, our...
The thing that would be, that would be key is knowing the exact amount of how much we want to request a bond for, go out for financing, uh, and that's dependent on the state, how much we may get from the state, if any, or the other funds that we have available. So that is one of the determining, because if we can decrease the amount that we go out for the initial bond, then that'll save a lot in financing costs.
And are the transaction costs of doing a bond so great that it, it wouldn't make sense to just do a small piece now? I mean, you know, like, you know, be very conservative and just, you know, get twenty-five million now and then, you know, go out again for the remainder if we need it, or something like that?
If we broke it up. Uh, the transa, trans, the transaction cost probably would be at least a couple hundred thousand dollars, so in total. Uh, that's just a ballpark, hundred, two-hundred, it depends on lots of factors to look at the size, because part of it could be, um, dependent on that, but, I mean, ideally, you'd want to keep it together, um, but again, it is balancing if you really thought rates were going to increase a lot beforehand. But the estimate we originally got at the high end did try to project out in the spring of what rates would be at. Okay, great questions. Uh, the portfolio's weighted average, again, still on page three-eighty-nine, is one-point-three-two years compared to one-point-three-three in October, so it's still a shortened, uh, time here. And the last comment, again, we do look at managing our portfolio based on liquidity of funds and, um, safety first, and then finally, the last one is the rate of return. So we're, we're keeping our portfolio safe as well. Next page, three-ninety, you just see some of the historic returns. You could see all the lines on the top graph are moving upwards, which is a good sign, and we're, we're delayed a little in that as our, as our, uh, portfolio matures, things fall off, we're buying investments at a higher rate where the L G I P just increases it, like I said, uh, seven times already this fiscal year, so we're, they're increasing at a, at a higher rate. Uh, the bottom graph shows our five-year maturity schedule, so you can see it's pretty even out where we're expecting, uh, that to come in. All right, so page, I'll flip to next, uh, the position summary on page, in your packet, three-ninety-three, the position control summary. So you can see we're pretty consistent from October to November, but we'd still increased F T E by one-point-two-five percent, and that was in the Health Services Department. But if you do look at our unfilled trend, and this is all the way that, at the bottom numbers, uh, you do see our, it's decreasing from twelve-point-six-eight to about twelve, eleven, eleven, now to ten-point-two-seven. So if we can continue that trend, that's good. Obviously, specific some departments, nine-one-one, right? They definitely need, uh, more help, but all departments are experiencing this, um, unfilled vacancy.
I still think the Sheriff's Office in July, that forty-four-point-seven-five, I don't, I don't think we were missing that many people then. I, I could never, when I asked the sheriff about it, so that could be just, you know, that made that month look a bit higher than I think it really was.
What I, what I had heard from between the timing of when, um, the fiscal year changeover and position management, when they're updating it, it's at a point in time, it might have thrown off the numbers a little, but in total, but it's all, uh, the August through November numbers are, are accurate there. It's a timing issue.
I mean, that was, that was right after budget adoption, so I mean, the, whatever expansions were approved, those were, those would, those would be logged as vacancies, right, until they were filled, so.
That would make sense.
Maybe that's, maybe that explains some of it.
Yeah. Okay, page three-ninety-four in your packet, first is just a high-level summary of the general fund with the dashboard there. Um, in the middle, you see the green bar, um, under the budget to actuals, it's at thirty-six million dollars or eighty-two percent of our budget in the general fund, and that's as, as you know, this now is finally November where we receive our property taxes, so that's where the majority of that thirty-six million is. Last year, we were at thirty-four-point-one million, at eighty-four percent of the budget. Expenses, uh, are eighteen-point-two million and forty-point-one percent of the budget. However, through the fiscal year November, it's forty-one-point-seven percent of the budget, so we're still under percent-wise for the budget. Page three-ninety-five in your packet, we'll just start a high-level, all funds, uh, countywide, again, it's forty-one-point-seven percent of the year. Total resources, we are anticipating, if you look at the projections there, at three-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, which is about one hundred and ten percent of where we thought we would be on resources. Flip the page to three-ninety-six, the total requirements or expenses expenditures, um, are four-hundred-and-twenty-seven million or ninety-eight percent of the budget, again, all funds. Then if you go to page three-ninety-eight, which is, once you look at your resources, your revenues, and then you compare them to your requirements or your expenses, uh, we're anticipating being, uh, one-hundred-and-sixty-five million projecting at the end of the year fund balance, which is one-hundred-and-twenty-six percent compared to one-hundred-and-thirty-one that we had budgeted. So we're almost at a half-year where we start feeling a little better on some of the trends, again, always taking into account, different funds have different seasonal revenues and expenditures as well. Page three-ninety-nine in your packet, we'll look at the general fund a little more detail. Um, again, as I mentioned, the property taxes are, this is the month where the majority of them came in, but again, we also received tax revenues in February and May, and that's where we'll see some others come in, although the majority definitely does arrive in November. As we talked about last month, uh, for the Clerk's Office, we are projecting that they will be under in their revenues, and also the major categories under requirements, you'll see savings, again, those are mostly due to the vacancy savings that we have. Page four-oh-one, we'll look at T R T Fund one-sixty-one-seventy. Uh, we just received, and you should have received, uh, reports that the tax revenue collections are now year-to-date up six-point-five percent. Um, it was a little higher at first, but it came down, uh, last month, I think it was six-point-four, so we're a percent, you know, just a little bit higher. So again, we still have a lot of, uh, time in this fiscal year to see how the trend's going, and again, we're a month delayed. This is the collections from when it actually occurred, this is when we received the revenue there. Again, on all of these, um, portfolio or fund statements, you could see the interest on investments, it's, they're going to be higher than projected, and that'll be universal on all these reports. Again, finally, on the T R T, we're still at a projected fund balance of four-point-one-three, again, with four million reserved for the Sun River, uh, commitments we've made there. Page four-oh-two, ARPA Fund two-hundred. Uh, that's, that's one area, again, and we pointed out during the mid-year budget, is there is interest on investments in the ARPA Fund, and unless those are allocated, but those will be funds that we can dedicate to, um, allocate to a project or a resource at a point in time as well. At this point, with all the requirements or expenditures, we are, um, still assuming people will be on track and, um, be able to spend their money, but it's specifically starting in twenty-three, we're monitoring all of the projects very well to, because we want to be on target and making sure all expenditures, um, occur as it does, so we don't have to return any money, or if we have to reallocate any funds. So we'll be really monitoring the expenses as we go forward.
So we're projected at what, to two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars in interest income then?
Yes, at this point, yep.
Okay.
And I would suggest, I, I think that may increase just a little bit as, depending on how the rates go, but at this point, um, that's, that's what the thinking is.
I was going to ask whether the, whether the, whether that, that projection being so much higher than budgeted was because of the interest rates rising, or it was, or it was because not as many people have used their money as we thought would have used their money by this time.
Yeah, for this fund, it's probably a combination of it, because the more funds remain unspent, then it earns its portion. Absolutely correct. So page four-oh-four in your packet, Sheriff's Office Fund two-fifty-five. Again, they receive the majority of their property taxes, ninety-three percent for them for the, for the current year in those budget-to-actual columns, and their, for their expenditures, uh, the requirement categories overall, their vacant positions are driving projected department savings with other fluctuations causing projected budget, budgeted overages. So, um, you can see they're still projecting to be over, uh, they're ending fund balance the bottom line there, um, by, over by two million from where they projected the budget to be. Health Services, uh, page four-oh-five, this is overall for their funds, they are projecting their revenues to come in higher at two-point-seven, their total resource is higher, two-point-seven million, and their expenses, they're projecting to be three-point-two million lower overall. A breakdown, uh, deeper into their funds, if you look at page four-oh-six, for their Admin Fund two-seventy-four, uh, the main item in their revenues is, uh, their federal grants, the projection includes unbudgeted FEMA carryforward from fiscal year twenty-three for vaccine clinics and outreach there. And their expenditures, there's a note B to point out, obviously, in their personnel savings, um, their projections to have it, and each of these funds, you'll see a footnote on there, it's how much the percent they assume moving forward. So they assume three percent in admin, but if you look at the next page, four-oh-seven, Fund two-seventy-four, their footnote E, you can see, and this is for behavioral health, they're projecting a ten percent, uh, vacancy rate moving forward. So specific within their areas, they also changed their rates. Other revenue is still on that page, four-oh-seven, for Fund two-seventy-four, uh, their revenues, they're anticipating about one-point-one million in their state grant revenue, and that's an increase of seven-fifteen, uh, related to new funds for aid and assist in a cost of living adjustment they received along with a carryover. Page four-oh-eight, for the Public Health Fund, two-seventy-four, uh, again, their revenue had a six-hundred-and-twenty variance they're projecting due to unbudgeted funds and, related to the vacancies in COVID, and their personnel costs, you can see that's footnote E, they are projecting a six percent, uh, moving forward. So you, the departments are looking at their vacancy rates and really thinking where they think they'll be, um, and how that affects their finances as well. Community Development Fund, I think you've heard this story as well, uh, the revenues, they're anticipating due to decreased volumes, application volume decrease, that the revenues will be down, and their expenditures, uh, really, it's a savings on their requirements, it's for the unfilled positions, um, so they're still, the, by the end of the year, they're anticipating the net change in fund balance will only be one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand at this time, uh, even with the decrease in the revenue, but it is still less than they originally budgeted there. Page four-ten, the Road Fund, three-twenty-five, um, their revenue is, for the motor vehicle revenue was updated based on their fall projection per the A O C and C R P, so that's a increase there, and their expenditures, E, again, they have a vacancy, they're assuming vacancy rate of four-point-one percent there. I'm going to flip a few pages forward, um, but if you have any questions on pages that I may skim past, you can ask, but four-nineteen, uh, the RV Park, so if I skip past it, things seem to be, you know, as anticipated, expected.
Well, the fact that, um, C D D went down, I think, seven-point-one percent, seven-point-something, they, they definitely are, per the period of time, they're definitely slowing down, but then, uh, seven-point-seven, but then, um, the solid waste is just down seven-tenths of a percent per the year to date, so it's still a little, you know, it's one of our leading economic indicators.
Yep, yep.
So.
That's right.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, share, Chad shared with me that one of the drivers of, of some of the revenue has been a lot of the work on the, the not-road property where the Central Library is proposed to go, so that's somewhat in, I guess, I'll use the word inflated their, um, their revenues this year with the activity that isn't necessarily construction as it may otherwise have been.
Okay, so it's that one project, you think?
Yeah, that one project he indicated was really a driver of keeping them stronger than they might otherwise be.
So page four-nineteen in your packet, RV Park Fund six-eighteen, uh, I just thought it was notable also for their, uh, RV Park fees, less than thirty-one days are top, their top revenue on their, on, in the listing order. Uh, they are anticipating a decrease of one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand from what they budgeted, and they are expecting less volume due to higher fuel prices and economic concerns. So we'll see how that, um, plays out as well, but I thought that was notable for you.
So how come there's another offering that can last longer than forty-five days? Is that, is, on footnote, uh, B, it said, um, there's a new RV park in town. Do, do we, as a county fair, um, board, do they limit how many days you can stay at ours, or is that a state limit?
I think there may be both limits, but I don't recall. In fact, Kim, I may have performed some research on this, let me defer to Kim.
We have internal regulations, but that mirrors what the state regulations are in order to avoid a tenant, um, landlord-tenant relationship.
Okay, so the new, so the new RV park then, the one that we're competing with, they, they don't, they're not going to worry about that, apparently not?
I don't know what their rules are, but I, I mean, it seems as though maybe they're maybe not concerned about that, or maybe they have long-term spaces for long-term.
I think that's what they may be offering is long-term, so it's a different relationship.
It's just a different, um, customer base that they're seeking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, page four-twenty-two, Health Benefits Fund, um, item there really is just, again, the beginning fund balance, it's projecting, um, less than what we had budgeted, uh, under the beginning fund balance by six-hundred thousand, that's at note D, so it's just starting the fund. The revenues and expenditures were still projecting as budgeted at this point, but it started the year, uh, with some less funds, so we'll be monitoring that as well. Page four-twenty-three in your packet, neck, uh, nine-one-one, the next one, again, we know the story of vacancy, uh, savings there, but it's because they really need to hire personnel, that's the major variance on their year-to-date costs thus far on that. And that's the end of the detailed funds that I have, but I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Robert, do you remember, did we collect ninety-three percent of the property taxes a year ago in the, in the first month?
Um, I'd have to look at the exact percent. I know the total revenue was a, uh, this year, we were at eighty-two percent of budget, and last year, we were at eighty-four percent, uh, we collected eighty-four percent, but we're still, um, higher. I'd have to look at the collection rate, um, compared to last year. Uh, let's see if I have.
Remember from some of our past, uh, you know, budget committee meetings, the, the assumption was, uh, many years, we've had a ninety-six percent collection rate, but that's not necessarily all in November.
Right.
Right.
Right, we'd have to, you know, kind of your question, how much is coming in in November compared to May, February or May in there? I could follow up for next month's report, I can bring some of those numbers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations on the excellent work of your staff.
That's right, they, they do a great job.
Yes, they do. Other items?
Robert, I have another item that you, you might want to hear here. I have an idea. So, uh, it may to be not building that fourth floor on the Justice Building over there at this time, well, probably forever, obviously, but, um, I'd just like to re, I'd like to revisit that matter, so that's the official request to my fellow commissioners. Uh, justification would be that, uh, you know, we're going to, um, build two floors, build two courtrooms, have two courtrooms available for build-out. Uh, you know, we've got two judges that are on staff now, two new judges, uh, in the future, one judge will come, you know, five, six, eight, ten years, whenever it is, and then another one would, would come in, build it out. So then we're looking at, uh, you know, twenty years from now possibly, before we'd need that next courtroom. Uh, also, knowing that forty-four-and-a-half-million-dollar number is going to be so valuable to start with a smaller number, and then buy, uh, buy it down from there. And, uh, you know, the governor, uh, commuting sentences and giving guidance about, uh, you know, the courtroom activity, and I'm not picking a fight there, I'm just saying, well, you know, maybe they're, the voters have, uh, you know, chosen to, you know, put the, uh, the leadership in as it is, and there's not, uh, a big push for growing this public safety system, so why would we build a fourth floor? So those are some of the justification and thoughts I have, so, uh, if there's support, I'd like to, you know, just discuss a little bit, maybe reconvene whenever we need to, and possibly make a different decision about that. Just the fourth floor, I'm very supportive of public safety in all the efforts we do, but it'd just be a shame if twenty years from now, we're still not. but it'd just be a shame if 20 years from now, we're still not using that floor. And it's nice to have the extra room. Yeah.
I think it's important to remember that it's not just criminal procedures that happen at the courthouse, there's a lot of civil litigation that gets processed over there. And so whatever your beliefs are about what the level of criminal prosecution, criminal procedures is going to be, that, you know, I don't, I wouldn't expect the civil, I would only expect the civil load to grow. And I do know that because of, you know, the time sensitivity sometime of criminal procedures, that there's, there's civil processes that are, you know, that are backed up like years over, you know, in the, in our circuit court at the moment. So yeah, I would be hesitant to try to downsize our project based on assumptions that, that we're not going to need as much, as much court time, judges, et cetera, in the future.
I would really like to go back and reassess the issue too. I, I didn't want to vote against it, but I, I'm thinking, okay, somehow the floors expanded to 13,000 square feet each, and originally there were 10, and so we got more square footage there. And I did see the Pence people Friday morning, they were at the Chamber event standing by me. And I think it's important to look at it and say, if we can't really use that extra floor, or that, you know, like the third floor, okay, does the DA's office really need 13,000 square feet? Because I hate to build something that's going to sit there for 20 years. And then the little indicator of the fact that they didn't need our giant courtroom really made me wonder, right, do we really need to build four floors? It doesn't, and I know that several things, things are happening so much better in our county. I'm hearing that from attorneys in, in the county saying, gosh, things are so much smoother. Apparently they don't need courtrooms in order to really carry out some of these legal, you know, assignments that they're fulfilling, but, you know, things are definitely moving better, it's great that we have those two new judges, but do we really need four floors? And I would really like to look at that again.
So as I say, I mean, it's kind of shocking to think, oh, we made a great big decision, how about we change that decision? So that's why I'm just asking to revisit this. And I do want to do it with fully informed discussion. So, you know, I'll go back, I want to communicate with the district attorney and the chief judge here, make sure, you know, I'm not, yeah, I want to make a decision, but I want to be well-informed. So I just want to start the process today, kind of notifying our folks that, you know, go ahead and plan on that first floor, integrate it to the second floor, and plan on the third floor, but maybe not the fourth. So that's just my thought for the day. And it sounds like we have support for, you know, revisiting this. However, we need to bring it back, we can do that now. So it's kind of guidance to Nick and everybody.
I think it's a good idea. We're talking about a lot of money, and when, and it's just like when I built houses. It's all on paper, and you just keep adding and adding, but then when you start paying for things, and we want our courthouse to be a gorgeous building, we want it to be impactful, representative of Deschutes County, but then again, we don't want to waste the taxpayers' money either.
Well, you know, just, you know, financial future, and as I say, it really started to come real when I thought, okay, 20-something years from now, we still not, might not be using those courtrooms. So 20-something years from now, those future dollars can pay for the future needs. So that's, that's where I was at, so, yeah.
Okay. All right.
If I can just ask, and Whitney, I don't know if you have a better sense of this, is this something we would want to bring back as soon as this Wednesday for a brief discussion, or is it something for the first week of January? Just because I know Lee's team, they were going to turn the corner to quickly begin to look at schematic designs, so I'll see what I can do to turn it over to Whitney. If you have any information at this point, I know it's fresh, it's new, and maybe we don't have anything at this point.
Yeah, I think the question is, I think we could certainly turn around and have staff come back to you on Wednesday, or if you wanted to connect with the larger project team, it might be, we might be looking into January to be able to get that group of folks together. So it's really just up to the board what would be most helpful for you in terms of the follow-up that you'd like to have.
Mr. Williamson, John, when I was talking to him on Friday morning, said he wouldn't be back to us for a couple of months. And so, you know, I would like to hear from like, what, what are the projections for the DA's office? I really think the first week of January, in order to pull everybody together, I mean, we're saying a lot, but we're talking about millions of dollars that we're really concerned with spending. So I would say that would, you could get a better, you could get better answers than, Whitney, than bringing everybody here Wednesday, and we really do want better answers. I want to know, what is projected that the DA really needs? Do they need 30,000 square feet more, you know, or is it, is it just like one floor would, 13,000 would really adequately serve what they're dealing, you know?
Definitely, we'll coordinate with Lee and others and come back to the board in early January for a follow-up conversation. And if there are specific questions like that, that we can really do our homework on to come back prepared, please feel free to send them to Lee or I, so we can make sure we come prepared with those answers.
Well, as I say, I just want to make sure, bring it up now as soon as I started to come to this conclusion, so we have this conversation.
And I, this is a project that should have started a long time ago, and each kind of hesitation, kind of second guess along the way delays, delays the time when construction is going to start even further, puts us into even higher interest rates. I just.
But if it's $5 million less, then I think it's a balancing.
Yeah, it's $5 billion less that forecloses future opportunities for us. I mean, to build that fourth floor, not part of the, not part of the, the project that's going to happen very soon, will cost twice as much.
Okay.
And, you know, we have, like, I am, I am certain that there are going to be all kinds of community partners who could make use of that space for, you know, very important public purposes in the interim. Just, you know, you know, maybe that, that, that may or may not be the business we want to be in, of providing office space for affiliated organizations or court-associated organizations who are doing important things for our community. But, but it's, it's not like that, that space is going to sit empty while, you know, while we're waiting for the, the next judges to come, or, you know, for that.
Well, we waited 20-some years for the last, for the two judges we just got, so when you keep that in mind, you realize that Oregon, the state of Oregon, does not put a lot of funding into judicials. So that was, that was a long wait.
Then commissioners, if I could just add that, when we do eventually bring this matter back before you, I think it's important that we provide proper notice, and also that we look at if it is the will of the majority of the commission, that we rescind the prior motion that you did, because there was a vote on this matter. So we need to make sure that that's clear and it's properly noticed.
Okay.
I just knew that if, yeah, if it wasn't brought up right now, it'd be too late to even do it, it'd be worse, so that was why I needed to bring it up.
I'm not saying we do anything at this moment, I'm just saying when we do eventually notice it, that we make sure that we make that motion to rescind if that's the will of the majority.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Always exciting here at Deschutes County.
Well, yes, any other items?
I have, I have another item. So you have heard me mention before the idea that the tax-foreclosed property auction receipts could be used for other purposes besides being chunked up into little slices and distributed to taxing, all the taxing districts in Deschutes County as they are currently being distributed. And didn't hear a whole lot of support for that idea from my fellow commissioners, but I did, I've talked to a number of, a number of elected officials from the other taxing districts in the county, from, from city councilors to library board members, to park and rec district board members, school district board members, that, and COCC. And there are many elected directors of boards of taxing districts throughout the county who are interested in at least having this option available. Does not mean that they need to exercise that option, and it would take a whole lot of discussion among all those taxing districts to figure out what the, what the right way to govern that, those funds, and allocate those funds would be. But what we do know is that if we do not pursue legislation, we, we don't even have an option. We don't, there's, there's no choice, there's no, yeah, that there's, you know, we only have the default option. So I, so working off of that, I have had some preliminary discussions with state legislators, and I've also kind of, I've gone back to some of those elected officials from other taxing districts and asked them if they would be willing to sign onto a letter requesting legislation to authorize Deschutes County and other counties, over 200,000 people, to, you know, to have this, this choice on how these funds are used. And I probably have about 25 elected officials from the region who are interested in signing onto that letter. Since legislative concepts need to begin, need to go in very soon, I'm probably going to be sending that letter off before the end of this week, and I wanted to offer to my fellow commissioners, if you are interested in signing on. Again, this is not a decision to exercise the option to use tax-foreclosed property receipts this way, it is merely a legislative move to have choices for our community. And I have a copy of the draft letter here. Can I take a look at it?
Sure.
Then you could take a look at that and think about it, and get back to me on Wednesday if you want.
That would be perfect, let's do that. How many, how, what type of funds are we talking about? Does anybody have that number? Kristy, do you have that number?
I can, I can tell you what I've been sharing with people, so the, what the level of sales are in a given year and what we actually collect in a given year are different. But by way of example, in 2019, the sales added up to about $787,000. In 2020, the sales added up to about, close to $500,000, I think it was 496,000. One of the really, really interesting things that I learned about, you know, about these funds along the way was that school districts are some of the biggest recipients, but the amount of those dollars that school districts actually get to use is very small. So for example, that, that example year, 2019, if there was sales of $787,000, Bend Lapine School District might be due 235,000 of that, but then they have to send that to Salem, and then they get a slice back based on the percentage of students from across the state are in the Bend Lapine School District. So I believe that that is about 3%. So we send Salem $235,000, or Bend Lapine School District sends Salem $235,000, and then we get back 3% of that. And the school board members who I talked to were really excited about the idea of, instead of sending hundreds of thousands of dollars to Salem, which, you know, provide benefits to school kids across the state, but we really need those dollars here to provide assistance to youth and families with children to attain housing security. So school district board members were really excited about the idea of being able to do something to help school children in their districts have stable housing so that they could learn better.
Okay, great. We will look at it and bring it up on Wednesday then. Anything else?
Chair, yes. The Association of Oregon Counties has requested Deschutes County to designate a voting member for their legislative committee. So I'm reaching out to you to see if you would like to select among yourselves a voting member for the AOC Legislative Committee.
Okay.
I'd be interested, I don't have any of the leadership positions at this time of AOC.
Okay.
I'd be interested as well, but, I'd be interested as well.
Okay, and I believe I've done it. So I need to share the responsibilities.
Are there any?
Or we could all be interested, and then we could have nothing done.
Well, we can always attend these things, but this is that.
Right, it's the voting member, yeah.
Yeah, they'll get, sometimes it'll get real interesting.
Okay. All right, so, let's see, what did we do last year? Did we like pull straws, whatever? Do we need, when, how soon do we need to make a decision? Can we do it on Wednesday?
The first meeting for AOC Legislative Committee will be Monday, January 9th, so certainly Wednesday is fine. If you prefer to wait a couple of days, that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you, Nick.
And then the second item I had is that the city of Bend, Mayor-elect Keebler, on behalf of the city, has sent an email to partner organizations asking if we would like to weigh in on their council goals and priorities for the next, for their next biennium, I believe it is. We would need to submit our comments by early January, and then we could decide if one of us prefers to provide those comments in person at their partner, I can't remember what it's called, the stakeholder presentations to their city council as they begin to think about their, their goals and objectives. They ask us what we think is the most critical issue facing the city. My suggestion, having heard from our Bend Chamber representatives today, is to increase the supply of housing. Of course, there are other needs, addressing homelessness, houselessness, transportation and others. But if we'd like to either discuss that today or later, or even as late as January 4th or 10th, 11th, that would be fine as well. I can, it's not a robust document, but I'm happy to provide either something on behalf of the county, or commissioners, of course, you can do it on your own, however you prefer.
I like the idea of us coming with some, you know, bold, agreed-upon statements, because we can all, three of us, say anything else we want to also. But yeah, if we have some good common ground, social support, that could really, you know, empower the city to know that we're there for them on specific issues. And I guess the first thing that comes to mind is the core development, you know, I mean, we know that housing's important, all kinds of housing important, the whole spectrum, whatever we can do. But my point is showing for, support for that downtown core development may be a valuable, you know, partnership. They already, you know, made their choice about our tax increment financing amounts that they're going to redirect for that purpose, so that's kind of in the past, but just showing support for it. And as I say, if anything that we could come up with that we all agree upon to show support.
Yes, I, you know, if we can just think about it for a bit, I'm not sure if we should wait till the 4th, but that'll, that might be appropriate. And definitely housing, what's happening, yes, with their big project, you know, their affordable project that Representative Zika had pushed through, is that one, is that one still going ahead?
Hospital 4079, the pilot.
Yeah.
Peter would actually be the best to summarize that, as I think. Peter would actually be the best to summarize that, as I think our Community Development Department may have been involved in the city of Bend's House Bill forty-seventy-nine property and where that, the status of that may be, I'm not as familiar with that.
I think that was that hatch block on the map we saw.
Audrey just mentioned it today.
Yep.
Well, she did, but I want to know what, I really want to know what's going on with it. How many years is this taking? I know the one in Redmond has a new name, and it's four hundred and eighty-five units, and, you know, we were just told we need thirty-two hundred, five thousand for the county. And how's, how big is the one in Bend?
Well, thank you, commissioners. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. So regarding House Bill forty-seventy-nine, there is a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. We've largely stayed out of it because the urban growth boundary's been amended, and they, the property's in an urban holding zone, but they are, I can just share with you the agenda, it has an annexation agreement, there's a hearings process, so they're looking for letters of support, looks like they're getting a subdivision application, and the wetlands update, I think, has to do with the artificial pond that was out there, to the extent that there are any jurisdictional wetlands. So I can certainly reach back to the city of Bend and ask kind of what their timeline is, the acreage on the property, Madam Chair, spreadsheet that tracks all of these opportunities. Let's see, that was a thirty-five acre property, and the board, the board adopted, according to my notes, adopted House Bill forty-seventy-nine in 2017. So it's, it's, it's taking a few years to work through Hayden Homes in this case, to get the requisite number of dedicated affordable housing units. I know that there were extensive conversations about improvements, also, I think transit, there were some transit opportunities, but if it's helpful, I can, on Wednesday, or I can just send you an email.
You can just send us an email, Peter.
Kind of what they think that horizon timeline is. It certainly, it appears that they're in a position to annex in early 2023.
It's only been five years?
It's been, it's been five years, and there is, to my knowledge, there's a difference in the strategy that the city of Bend took versus the city of Redmond. So the city of Bend began coordinating on implementing House Bill forty-seventy-nine once they knew they had a developer that was interested, which was Hayden. I think there was, there was a predecessor to Hayden that fell through, then there was Hayden, and then that materialized to necessitate the urban growth boundary amendment, given all the resources that go into the, you know, the UGB amendment process, the entitlement process, annexation included. To my knowledge, the city of Redmond, they, they were, they worked, their approach was to bring that land in for, first to amend the urban growth boundary, get that property inside the UGB, as a UGB adjustment. So I should, I should back up, the, I just realized I gave you the wrong date. Twenty seventeen, you remember the subject property was a plan amendment zone change, and that went from EFU to MUA ten. And then the House Bill forty-seventy-nine, that legislation, I want to say, was in 2019. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, to allow the Redmond piece, as a second.
Right, but the legislation for House Bill forty-seventy-nine proceeded Redmond's, and I think it followed 2017 when that subject property was re-zoned to MUA ten. So you mentioned five years, Commissioner.
So you're saying it's, it hasn't been five?
It hasn't been five because I think House Bill forty-seventy-nine followed the plan amendment zone change. Am I?
Yeah, no, I think you're right. I think, because the plan amendment zone change followed House Bill forty-seventy-nine, the plan amendment zone change was implementing forty-seventy-nine.
Is that right?
And then the legislature changed it again to allow Redmond to also participate, but you're right, we, we were at a number of meetings with the initial developer, I don't recall who it was, with the city on the property, but it did fall through. And so fortunately, I know you, your team has been working on the next iteration of it, but you're right, standing back, yeah.
City of Redmond, I'm sorry for that confusion, the city of Redmond first focused on getting their UGB amendment to utilize that special legislation, and now they're trying to identify a developer that can execute the terms and conditions of that legislation. So they, I think, were the first ones maybe to amend the UGB, but the city of Bend may be the first one that actually has a project that is entitled and that can get built to provide affordable housing for our community members.
Okay. If you have any information on that, that's great. Somebody wanted to meet with me, and they were gonna be part of the Redmond, and that's why I know there's a new name. So I just, I think, Brenda, I copied you on that email. I don't, I don't know if anything's gotten on my calendar yet. Okay, with that, he was gonna be in town either, I think, Thursday or Friday, so maybe I can get to see them.
Yeah, and Nick was right, that House Bill forty-seventy-nine was legislation passed in 2016, so that land was brought in specifically.
In twenty-six, okay, oh, gosh, all right.
That was legislation, yep.
All right, great, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I mean, while we're talking about stuff, stuff that's happening in the city of Bend, I mean, the Bend Central District is interesting, the House Bill forty-seventy-nine project out on the east side is interesting. I, you know, I think one of the city's big challenges is that there's a, you know, the big chunk of land that they have in their UGB that's available is down in the southeast, and they don't have the infrastructure to, you know, for people to actually build it out. So, you know, if we're throwing out kind of topics of interest related to housing in the city of Bend, I, you know, I would, I would put that out there. I don't know if that, if that qualifies as more than one, or not. I mean, it's all, it's all housing interest.
Yeah. I think these will be good topics to discuss with our joint meetings with the cities that we're already beginning to coordinate on with Bend, Redmond, Sisters Lepine, that started in early 2023, to find out where they're at with all of these efforts.
All right, are there any other, other items? All right, so I believe we can go to executive now. It is.